From the casino funds every year. We're still waiting to hear back from the county review board on whether or not the application will be approved for funding. We're also still waiting for the school district to get an update on the list of state champions and individual champions to update the champion signs that are located down at Diddy Richards Park on 273 and on in Community Park on Wilson Avenue. The problem we're running into is the staff who is charged with that is on summer break. So, we were told that individual would be sent an email and when they got the email they would update us all that information. Under financial management, as I reported at the last meeting, the town shopped around the healthcare coverage and was able to switch carriers but keep the same level of healthcare in place. We ended up switching from Coventry of Delaware to Atna and we were able to save the town roughly $14,000 a year with this switch. There were a couple of administrative details that need to be finalized, but the employees have received their new health cards and we have now switched over to Atna. The second item is the engagement with the auditor. We, the auditor will be in town later on this month to begin some preliminary analysis of the town's finances as part of the annual audit. It is important to note that the town has been literally chasing down invoices and normal operating bills to make sure that the expenses and revenues are properly charged for the right fiscal year. This makes for a much cleaner year-end report than through the audit. And let me explain what I'm saying by that is we normally close out our books on June 30th, which we have. When the auditor comes in to review your records, they will look at invoices and bills that have been paid. Let's say we write the check on, you know, July 10th today. And if the service was something that was delivered in this year's fiscal year, the auditor will make an accrual and have us transfer that expense or revenue to the years before, which means when we come to you with year-end reports, a month and a half or two months later when the auditor is done, the numbers might not match because the auditor is requiring us to properly list those charges and revenues to the previous year. So, one way of trying to get a cleaner end of the year report is to get very aggressive about getting vendors to give us the invoices that we know are going to be charged to the previous year. So, that's what I mean by that statement. Under public works, street repaving and sidewalk repair. We are still working on the bid specifications for this year's paving and sidewalk repairs. The recent election and transition has pulled us away from the process to some degree and we were waiting for the appointments to the different departments. Now that the commissioner appointment has been made, we can revisit this project in the next week or so to finish with the bid specification. Again, those are, the target areas are Mount Street between Pearl and Hayes Avenue, Pearl Street between the Town Hall and the intersection of Mount, and sidewalk repairs in all of those areas, and then also sidewalk repairs on Cherry Street. So, that's the target area right now. Grass cutting. The town parks have all been cut, but the grass is turning brown, just like everybody else's yard is starting to turn brown. So, our crews have slowed down to some degree, the amount of time that they are cutting the grass so that we don't have too much ground out. Community-wide weed spraying, as many folks in the room know, that every year the town pays for a contractor to come around and spray weeds that are on sidewalks and the intersection of streets and curving. That has taken place a couple of weeks ago. Under park and recreation, the dog park down at the Triangle Park at the, basically the intersection of Mount and Walney, the Walnight. Again, the recent election and transition has sort of pulled us away from progress with that, with that grant. But now that the commissioner appointment has been set, we can revisit this project in the next week or so. We are reaching a critical stage and then we have to make up ground in order to achieve the successes that were originally planned for completion later on this summer. Community park grants. We have a deadline coming up for the completion of a grant submittal if we so choose to with the Department of Natural Resources. I will be getting together with the Park and Recreation Commissioner in the next week or two to begin trying to determine target areas for a possible grant funding in the future. I believe the grant application deadline is, I believe it's August 21st. So, we have right around a month or so to get the grant application in. Under building, planning, zoning and code enforcement, the next planning and zoning meeting is scheduled for July 23rd of 2000, July 23rd, 2012. That's a Monday evening at seven o'clock. While the elected body was down at MML, the Planning and Zoning Board did have a meeting in which they discussed revisions to the sign ordinance. I've reported in the past, we have a very old sign ordinance that is a mix match of various sign ordinances from different communities. And as I've said before, currently our sign ordinance limits signs in what we would view as our commercial area of Main Street to nine square feet. And that's obviously not very effective for businesses that want to advertise, but that's what we inherited with an old ordinance. So, the Planning and Zoning Board is working to amend that, to make it a little bit more reasonable, to make it easier for our businesses to advertise. You might have noticed up in Summer Hill, there was one remaining building lot in Summer Hill that had never been developed. It's been owned by an individual for many, many years, and he has come forward to want to go ahead and put a house on that property. I know the question comes up about the sewer and water moratorium, but the impact fees were paid for that back in the early 2000s. So, for all intents and purposes, that house is not covered by any sewer and water moratorium. So, that house is under construction. Also, some people have noticed that the Top of the Bay Crab Shack down on Main Street was no longer operating there. I did an inspection today of a new crab shack. I'm not sure of the name of it, but they, I did a final inspection there today, so they should be opening up in the next couple of days, selling basically the same thing that the crab shack or Top of the Bay has sold previously. Under sewer and water, we have a meeting coming up this Thursday at 1:00 PM with USDA and MDE to go over some preliminary construction guidelines with the construction of the new sewer plant. We also have to go over and reaffirm the funding guidelines and the reporting that we have to do because it is federal government money that is paying, eventually paid for the sewer plant. So, we've got to make sure that we have all our auditing and records in place for that. Again, that's this Thursday, July 14th at 1, oh, I'm sorry, July 12th at 1:00 PM. We are also still in the process of switching out some old meters in the town of Rising Sun. We've had some property owners, we've had some property owners, they have moved, they were vacant houses. So, the, so the meters, the new meters were never installed in the properties. So, we're in the process of getting those switched out. That concludes my report.
So, Chief, can you report?
Thank you, sir. I'm going to be brief. We missed one meeting, so the stats are going to appear to be a little elevated from what they were for a two-week period because now we're looking at a four-week period. But the total number of calls we've responded to was 543. We made five CDS, which is drug arrest, one handgun violation, a peace order violation arrest, and quite a few thefts. Martin's keeps us busy. Also, we had two juvenile arrests. Our focus is going to change during the summer months because of the last Chiefs of Police, the Chiefs, the evening with the Chiefs meeting. Many people made complaints to me that there is speeding vehicles in their neighborhoods. I understand the speed limits are 25 miles per hour throughout town, so any vehicle that's going a little bit above that's going to seem like it's going a whole lot more. But the guys are going to make more of an effort to be in each neighborhood working speed from this point on. If there's any questions or any concerns about any activity in your neighborhood, please make sure you get them to me so we can respond accordingly. And that's my report, sir.
Is there any old business to be discussed?
I'd like to bring up the members there if I could, please. Calvin, you mentioned that the, not all the houses, all the buildings had water meters in them and that we're getting water meters in the rest of the?
Yes. What we had, off the top of my head, about maybe 15 to 20 vacant houses during the whole installation process. A couple of them were foreclosures. Some were people that had sold, were intending on selling the vehicles and didn't want to install the meter in there because there was nobody living there. So, those are the subjects and which are immediately replaced.
Okay. And so, at some point when everyone has a meter, we'll be able to do a comparison of the water going into our water tank and being versus the amount of water that's coming out of our water tank so we can see how much we're losing in evacuation or leakage?
Yes.
And is that expected to be done within the next two to three months?
Yes, easily.
Okay. I also had a question on the progress of their permits on the sewer plant. Are we, you said we're meeting with the USDA this week and that's pre-construction?
Yes.
So, the permits for moving ground, are they, do we have them yet?
Yes, that's, that's what I've been notified, which is the reason why they scheduled the pre-construction. So, yes.
Okay. So, we have all the permits we need to go forward?
Yes.
And we don't need, do we need to get any other additional permits, electrical, when they get to that point, but?
Yes, they would do that when they get to that point. And those permits would be done through the county electoral.
Okay. Thank you. I would like to, you talking about streets and sidewalks, the sidewalk committee did meet. We have several items that we'd like to discuss with you before we make a report to the general body and to the general public because there's some things we need to address before we make recommendations. I think that's all that I have on my list for today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any old business?
No.
New business, any new business to discuss?
Well, I have something on a new business. I just wanted to make the citizens aware that we're going to start taping all of these meetings in case you guys want to be able to watch them. We're going to put them on the website. I'm talking with Stephen about trying to get him on the public access channel on Armstrong. I think for transparency reasons, you should be able to know what's going on with your government and you should be able to watch it on tape. So, instead of hearing things coming from people, you should be able to watch it on tape and see for yourself what happens. So, from now on, that's what we're going to be doing.
What's the turnaround time on that?
I've already talked to Calvin about it. It's a, Calvin, it's just about securing a video camera and a tripod correct to start taping the meetings. So, hopefully as soon as possible. I would actually like to see it started at the next meeting. I did ask Dave here to tape this meeting. We're going to try to make it available on the website. I think it's important because some people are working, some people can't make it to these meetings, and you should be able to watch it, so.
If you tape it Tuesday night, my turnaround time, I meant, if you tape it Tuesday night, when will it be available on the website?
That would probably be a question for Calvin or Rhonda. How long does it usually take to put it up there? How long would it take?
I think once we completely figure out how to upload a video.
This is something that's new, so maybe, do you want to say two weeks, a week?
Well, I would think that by the beginning of next week, we should have it figured out, that. And then going forward, I would say within 24 hours or so we would have the video.
I'm not the type of, speaking for myself, and I don't mean to speak for the other members of the elected body, but I'm not the type of person to say something to your face and do it differently. So, if you want to watch it on tape, then you can watch it. I think that's very important, so moving forward, that's what I would like to see happen. That's all, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Okay. It looks, like in view of what happened, I don't have much to say. I'll have to go and assess what my role in this whole town is now. It looks like my whole role has been abolished.
Just a minute.
And so, I need to, I had hoped to make some very positive changes in the town, but it doesn't look like it's going to be possible to do that. I wanted to bring the town together and eliminate some of the dissension and lack of progress in the town. So, and I believe that the town can be operated much more cost-effectively and it could be more responsive to the needs of the people and it could be more inclusive and, there's one other thing that I can't think of right now. But anyway, I had great hopes for the town, but it seems that I'm just on the sidelines now. So, I'm sort of disappointed, but I've been disappointed in my life before and I'll figure out what, what to do about it. And thank you all for coming. I appreciate your support. I think there were many people here in support of me and so I now call for citizens input. I hope that any citizens.
Commissioners comments.
Oh, commissioners comments, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for you, if I may. I just wanted to follow up with you. I know you had mentioned that you wanted to do a town-style meeting, a Town Hall-style meeting. I do look forward to speaking with you whenever at the time with the board altogether, deciding when you want to do this meeting, when you want to talk about it. At any time, you can.
Well, it looks like I don't have much power to do anything, so you better talk to Mr. But anyway, that's.
I disagree with that. I, I think that the ordinance indicates that you, you know, will still set meetings and things of that nature and Town Hall meetings.
I'm just a figurehead. And Joanne, that's not the role that I had anticipated having in the town of Rising Sun. I was sincerely interested in trying to improve this town. I came to this town in 1937 and have been involved in leadership positions, in civic activities, in Little League, in the PTA.
And, and we are still looking forward to your recommendations and you still make the recommendations, but we get to vote on them?
What's used to me making recommendations when you're not going to, you know, not going to approve anything I say?
Well, we haven't heard any yet.
So, you know, I just, I just don't think that's, you know. Okay. I, I thought I was in communication and this is a complete surprise to me. I never saw this till it was handed to me in, in here tonight. So, I think it would have just been a little courteous to let me know what you were going to do. I believe I've worked pretty hard for this town and then to get slapped in the face, and it is a slap in the face or a stab in the back or whatever you want to call it. There are severe wounds in my back and my head and everything else. So, with that, Mr. Pearson, you are the first man that.
No.
The Commissioners have something to say.
Comments from the Commissioners.
Mayor Fisher. Okay. Mr. Barkwood.
I don't have any comments at this time. I'm going to just have some research that I need to do.
Okay. I just have a brief statement that I'm going to make. I just wanted to thank the former mayor and the former commissioners for their service to the town. And I want to thank all the people that joined me on my journey of running. I knocked on a lot of doors myself and talked to a lot of people in town. And I look forward to you coming to me and asking me any questions. Don't hesitate to take my card. I'll be here at the end of the meeting. And call me, talk to me about whatever you want to talk to me about. I have an open ear. And I look forward to working with newly elected body as well as some of the old commissioners that are here now as we try to make Rising Sun a better place to live. So, that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Alton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have much way of comment tonight. I just was very pleased that, that most of us were able to attend the Maryland National League Convention. That's always a good experience. I know I've gotten a lot out of it and I think, I think everyone did again this year. So, I think that will help us all move forward and help us work together. Thank you very much, sir.
Joanne.
I want to thank the previous mayor and commissioners. I want to say that I'm looking forward to working with the new board and mayors. I wanted to indicate what a pleasant evening it was attending Jim Jones' retirement party. That was very nice and I did get to even speak, sit with the honoree. Thank you for all coming out tonight. I, I think this is a wonderful part of being, having a town meeting is that people come and bring their input and, you know, make it, make it a Town Hall meeting, every meeting. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pearson.
I would like to say that it was a pleasure serving it down for the last six years and I certainly wish all of you the best in trying to keep the town going in a forward motion. Thank you.
Linda Fisher, my daughter.
Linda.
No, no.
Skip, yes.
I too would like to thank the former board commissioners and the mayor for their service and welcome the new ones on and the current ones that are still there and to new ones in general. This might be the easiest meeting you have, but this gives you a taste of what may be to come. But, you know, the things that were done tonight from what I, you know, gather or so on, I think it's going in the right direction. There's reason for what was being done and I think you guys might have known about it ahead of time and don't, don't give up on it. You've got to work together and if you don't, you're going to have chaos. And, you know, chaos is okay on math, but not in politics. So, just try and hang in there and, you know, stay together.
Jeff, I'm going to go on.
Yeah, I intend to address something, a different issue, but.
Speak a little louder.
I'm going to defer from commenting on some, another issue I really wanted to pursue, but I would like to ask some questions. I have a little problem here and I'm not used to local politics. I'm one of those, so I've lived my whole life and I went out and voted and didn't pay much attention to what was going on. I'm a little shocked by what happened tonight, but I'm not sure I really understand it. I hope I'm dumb enough that I really don't perceive what I think's going on is really going on. But I would like to ask you, are the changes that you're making available on paper so that I can get a copy?
They were just published, I believe.
You can have my copy and I'll get a copy from Town Hall.
Well, are you going to put it on the website or?
Yeah, probably.
When?
It should be published. It's supposed to be published.
When?
Well, I would say it has to be published for comment.
Not until after the.
Right. When is it available on the website?
Here.
Sure you don't want to keep?
I'll get another one. I hope.
Well, hey, I'll make you a copy of it.
The town, the town has a copy.
This is not it.
Well, how about?
This is not the, this is not what I read. Okay. You're wanting a copy of what I read?
Yes, and the other challenge.
And the resolution.
Yeah, I'd like to know all the changes that you, so I can, because I'm a little, I'm not sure what's going on.
So, I didn't even have any of it.
Well, yes, you did, but this is not it.
But what I would like to ask you now, did I understand correctly, is all of this authorized under section or Article 23 or whatever it is of the annotated code of the State of Maryland? Where's the authority that, of all of these changes that you're doing?
In, in that annotated code.
Okay. Is that available on your website?
Oh, no, you have to go to State of Maryland to get that.
It's online. It's online.
Online. Or you can call them and ask them.
Can you give him?
I can give him a.
Copy?
A copy, yes.
Please, can you give him a copy, please?
Get through it here. Here we go. Resolute.
Okay.
Here you are, sir.
Sign up, sign up and I'll see that everybody that wants a copy gets a copy.
That's what I read.
Just sign up where you go out and I'll see.
This is.
So, am I basically understanding you just basically, we go to the old.
This is his incumbent, not question and answer, sir.
Yeah, that's what they tried to do.
Well, you said it, you're going to have a town meeting. I'm trying to engage with you.
I'm not done. I'm not done.
That's my role.
I'm just trying to engage with you folks. You want to be open and have a town meeting, I'm just, I'm, I'm kind of, I appreciate you, thank you very much. I'm kind of ignorant of how politics works. I really wish I was a student, but I just want to understand what's going on.
I would say what you need to do is to get a copy of the code as it existed and compare that to the proposed ordinance. The resolutions have been passed, the two that I gave you, and the ordinance has yet to be passed. But you should get a copy of the old code because this is, is not code, my proposals are not code yet. You can get copies of the ordinances in the Town Hall. I mean, that's how I got my copy of the ordinance.
Just to make a comment, I'm not exactly what, I don't have time here. I'm not exactly what, sure what to say here because some folks heard me speak last week and I certainly didn't support Bob's election as mayor, but the people, enough people in this town elected him. And unless there's some justifiable reasons to kick him out as mayor, I think we need to honor that he was the elected mayor.
They're just rewriting it. I think your question is why? Why? Why is the?
It's an emergency.
What is the emergency?
Okay. We'll, we'll try to answer your questions and we're supposed to be limited to five minutes. I haven't got time, but that's fine.
Well, thank you very much.
I'll, I'll talk to you myself. Okay. Jim, Jim Gibbon.
I'm Jim Gibbon. I have sued Rester and I've had problems with the town board before on different matters. I was hoping that these young fellows can get the board straightened out and you folks can all get the, on the same. can all get on the same track. And I think maybe these young fellows can do it, and I want to congratulate both of them. And Charles, I especially want to congratulate you. I don't know how anybody could get all those things that were said...
Play the audience so that I can hear what you're saying.
I don't know how you could digest all that in this length of time to vote on it. Really.
Well, I read them yesterday. I don't feel comfortable in this decision. I have to read them, and of course, I'm going to be the first to tell you I told them I was in agreeance with it.
How'd you get them yesterday when you weren't swimming till today?
When I was having a meeting with the town. I didn't get them personally. However, I told his Commissioners, and I'm going to be honest with everybody, that I was in agreeance with it. When I hear Joanne read it, something doesn't sit well with me. So therefore, I'm not going to vote until I tell them. It's more than one day to just digest all of it.
I just wanted to make a comment, just to say that I received it maybe about two or three hours ago. So just so you know when I received it. So, I sat down... No, what I voted for was to table the motion. When you make an emergency motion, if you don't have a third, then you bring it up at the next meeting. So what I voted for was to table the motion. I just wanted to make that.
The first time you voted.
No, what I voted for was to table.
Yes, you did. You voted for it. You voted for it. You voted for it. Yes, you did.
Thanks to Charlie, it wasn't passed.
The other thing I had to say, just a couple months ago, I had a water leak in the restroom, and I want to thank the town employees, the way they handled it, they really handled it professionally. It wasn't one of the easiest fixes, and it could have been made, but they cooperated a hundred percent, and I want to thank them for that.
Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment?
My name's Chris Callahan. I live on 20 Mount Street. I'd like to welcome Travis, Commissioner Marion, Commissioner Berkowitz. I'd like to welcome you also. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. I hope that this board can continue to work forward as the previous board has. I would like to thank you for your attendance at previous meetings, and I am just curious as to where your attendance at previous meetings were, Mr. Berkowitz.
I followed the meetings through citizens. I'll be the first to tell you I haven't come to the meetings. I've been to three meetings in my life, not going to sit here and give you a story. I know you're going to call me out.
Thank you for your honesty.
Because I'm making a decision now.
But I applaud you for running, because prior to my election, I attended very few meetings, and it was probably because I wasn't aware of what was going on that I went.
I'm sure you're not the first one that didn't time meetings before they ran.
Well, what I've heard tonight, I can't make much sense of it either, but it sure does seem like...
Speak a little louder.
It sure does seem like the mayor was treating them fairly. I don't know for sure, but it seems like he took his powers away.
Yes.
And that's not right. We're supposed to work together as a town to improve things for everybody, and the boards got to work together, along with the mayor, and he's got to be included in all these decisions that you guys made. It just doesn't seem fair. I don't... There was so much said, I can't make sense of it.
You made good sense. Yeah.
But something's not right. Name is Benny Vincent.
What's your name?
Benny Vincent.
Benny one?
Vincent.
Vincent?
Yes.
And you live at what?
104.
104.
I mean, I had hoped that as a local government, we could all work together, put past feelings of ill or whatever in the past, and everybody work together to improve the town for everybody that lives here, whether it be lowering taxes, or better sidewalks, all different types of things. But it sounds to me like a couple people up there didn't have the same goal as to give the mayor what he's due as the mayor.
Should remember that the next election.
Amen.
Mr. Norton, I appreciate every time this whole thing was going on, and called him Mr. Mayor. You have all, I thought, spoke very well, and my fear is, and I see the function of this government day in and day out, is that a lot of people do not understand the full makeup of how this town works. And a lot of what was proposed is actually how it's being run currently, right now. It is mainly, and it is the responsibility of the Commissioners, to vote and make a decision. They're not really... It might seem as if they're taking power from the mayor. All they're doing is making the code equal what is truly happening currently, right now, in this government. The Commissioners are the ones that have the power in this town. The mayor makes suggestions. So you... They're not trying to be cruel. All they're doing is trying to correct the code that has been incorrect for so many years. And I'm...
I remember that.
Wait a minute, let me finish. I am sorry if it appears this way, Mr. Fisher, but all they're doing is trying to correct something that should have been corrected 10 years ago. And I'm sorry if that makes some people mad, but they're not... It's not what you think it is. You're all getting angry over nothing. You need to work together as a group to make this town. And in the past two years, in my observation, I have seen this town run more efficiently than it has ever run, and more things have gotten accomplished that have never been accomplished before. I have seen Commissioners that were so against each other come together in the past two years. I hope and I pray that the four Commissioners that are in front of me right now do the same thing, and come together as a team, and make things happen in this town, whereas before, nothing was getting done. And now, you need to come together as one group, forget our political differences, and come together and make this town come together.
What's your address number? Red Pump Road?
197 Red Pump Road.
I just have a quick question. When were these resolutions created and by whom? Because they just cropped up tonight, and three of you just took seats at the table. So I just want to know, when were they created and by whom?
What's your question with one of you and Mr. Bonnenberger?
When were these three things created and by whom? Because one of them got it yesterday, one got it today. Mr. Fisher said he never got it.
I talked to him about it this morning. I was officially handed it to him. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. So you've had 24 hours on the clock.
I ain't much... Justin, I'll tell you that.
But when were these three created and by whom?
The resolutions were recommended by Commissioners. The town administrator provided the correct wording for the resolutions that were presented. The resolution material was presented by the Commissioners to the town administrator. He did the wording on that.
When did this occur? When did this occur?
The old Commissioners.
Was it during the executive session at the end of June? Okay, when were these created?
I believe that they were created around the... I'd have to... Let me look at my calendar. Great. I have my June calendar out, but I think I'm... I'd have to look at my calendar in my office, because I have a tendency to write things down and not write the dates.
They were created by you and Mr. Lawton, or with help from the passports?
I believe that Mr. Lawton and I talked to Mr. Bonnenberger individually, never together. We each presented him with our ideas for what resolution should be presented at this meeting.
And the old board had no involvement?
No, they did not.
So you two wrote it? You two want to govern? Let me be honest, the old... I mean, that's what you're saying, the two of you did it. That's what I heard. I'm sorry if I'm wrong.
Sounds right.
We presented ideas that we wanted resolutions.
Who wrote it? Who did you present it to? You two did it, right?
We indicated... We gave the what we wanted in a resolution to Mr. Bonnenberger. He put it in a correct format, language, if you will, and then we...
We as in Joanne?
We as in... I read it and said, "That's what I wanted to say," and I'm supposing that Steve... Mr. Lawton did the same thing, read it and said, "It was what he wanted to say," and I believe that...
You had something to go with that?
Pardon me?
The question was, who wrote it?
Physical writing of the...
No, whose words?
Whose words?
Whose ideas?
That's what I just said. I said that Mr. Lawton and I, each individually, separately, and alone, went to see Mr. Bonnenberger and said, "These are things that we think need to be addressed at the next town meeting." And how did we do that? And we were told we needed to put them in resolution form, and therefore, he came up with the wording based on our ideas.
Oh, he came... Mr. Bonnen...
Harry, you have a comment?
I would just... It was just you and Steve, not the previous... The people going out.
I don't know that they had any input into that, not to my knowledge.
As part of the previous administration, wouldn't they have some say in that, or...
It was done between the two...
Mr. Fisher, did I say something?
I'd have to look at my calendar at my office.
We have nothing.
Tell you the actual change.
We will not reelect. I got that, okay? Our involvement basically stopped at that point.
So you weren't in the executive meeting?
I was in the executive meeting.
Every one of them was in.
But...
But if the... Resolution...
There was no coordination with me.
We cannot talk about what happened in that executive meeting, but I can tell you, I didn't... We weren't involved in this. That's all I wanted to do. That's my line.
They didn't vote on it. They voted on it here, but...
I would also like to reiterate, Mr. Pearson said we were not involved in that.
One at a time, one at a time.
I do support those first two resolutions, and yes, I would agree that that third resolution needs to be read through thoroughly.
I believe that it would have been very courteous, since I was in both contact with both of these Commissioners, and they never uttered a word that they had anything like this in mind. So I think it was improper behavior on the part of Commissioners. I mean, obviously, they didn't want me to know it.
How can we fix it?
Yes, Sandy.
I'm sorry to say that it's the democratic process, Rising Sun's way, all over again. You're only elected if you follow the rules that the previous administration wants you to, and that's nothing personal.
Fifty-five.
I'm on there. I just didn't say I'd speak.
Okay. Is there anybody else? Mr. Hodge.
Mayor Fisher and Board of Commissioners, I'm the county commissioner, and I wanted to welcome you to politics. I'm really here to thank you for serving, and I hope that the county Commissioners of Cecil County, and the Board of Commissioners, and the mayor of Rising Sun can work cooperatively and collaboratively together in the future to help all of Cecil County, including the citizens of Rising Sun, solve your challenges and work together. I'm sure that this will get worked out, and we can move on and move into bigger and better things. So please contact me or any of the Commissioners if we can work together on some project.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. That was in my speech.
Mr. Fisher. Mr. Fisher. Mr. Fisher.
David Warnock, 108 Broadleaf Court. I'm not going to make any commentary on the content. I just wanted to note, and I'm also planning a zoning, so I've got some familiarity with procedures, and without any commentary on what was presented in the ordinance. I know it seemed like a long, drawn-out, tedious, horrendous process to listen to that long ordinance read, but that is required by law to read into the record. I mean, Sandy, you would agree, that, you know, if they're going to present such an ordinance, they would be required by law to read the entire ordinance into the record. So I just wanted to note that, because I could see kind of people in the room, like, you know, glazing over, reading, following.
What constitutes the emergency?
I'm not commenting on any of the content. I just wanted to note the procedure that was followed, so...
Yes.
Thank you.
No one.
Second. We have to vote.
Yes, yes, we do. So all of you in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not here, no names.